Members of the staff, members of the planning board. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 7th, 2021, meeting of the Town of Cohasset Planning Board. I'd like to get a roll call vote to begin with Clark Brewer.
It's just roll call, isn't it? Clark Brewer, present.
Tom Callahan.
Present.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, present.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, present.
Amy Glassmire, present. We have two items of business this evening. The first is a I'm going to use the chair's prerogative and reverse the, oh, I can't. I don't know that I can start One Pleasant Street until Paul Caleri, Paul Caleri is here.
You can.
And then again?
And is Paul Caleri eligible since he missed the last meeting? Did he do a makeup?
He said he was reviewing everything.
But we have a special form for him to sign and has he done that?
I haven't been in the office before I left.
Okay, so.
Cindy has a comment.
Let's wait a minute. Cindy Amaro.
I think if he hasn't signed the form, but he's done the review and can tell you he's done the review, it'll be okay and then have him do the.
All right, but what is the recommendation with him not being present as we open this discussion?
I will try to give him a ring.
Just go.
All right, then the first item on the agenda is the, we closed the hearing of One Pleasant Street at our last meeting. And we developed a set of conditions. They have been through review by the planning board members as well as the applicant's lawyer. Here, this evening, we're here to discuss the changes and modifications to the condition statement. And to seek approval of the project. So I will open it up to the individual planning board members and I'd like to ask first, Clark Brewer, Eric Potter, were you able to review the revised? Say that again?
Yeah, so I'm all set on my end. I'm ready to go.
All right, Clark Brewer, were you able to review all of the changes?
I reviewed the set of notes that got emailed to me by Jen. I think that's the most recent. I reviewed it in its entirety.
All right, great. I did the same myself. So then let's begin by going over the document and approving the changes that were suggested either by planning board members or by the applicant's legal counsel. Clark Brewer, do you, one question is, do we go just one by one?
We could go page by page.
Okay.
I don't know if during deliberations, we say what we think about the project or you just express what you think about the project through these conditions.
Can we just?
Say that again, Tom?
Can we just go through it?
Right, so let's begin.
There's a lot of fill in information about dates, application dates, all this other stuff. I left that blank. Jeff didn't have to fill that in. Lauren was going to fill that in. Going to trust Lauren to get it done accurately. On page two, it appears Jeff submitted the word "commercial" in the description of the proposal, fine by me.
Tom, you're wavering already, so you've got to look at your, I'm sorry.
Put the damn thing on my keyboard and if my keyboard screws up, that's fine. Page two, I think the one change of adding the word "commercial" is fine. The next thing that Jeff suggested was on page six.
Oh, if we're not done with page two, I have a couple of comments. I wondered if we should put the, at the end of proposal, 14 residential rental units on the second and third floor. And I also did the math on what the building square footage is. You have the footprint accurate. But I think we should have the building area, which is 23,955, added to that sentence with the footprint. What's that number again? Who's editing the document? Are we going to edit while we go?
Yeah, Lauren, it might be helpful. Can you put it up in the screen and edit as we go?
I'm working on getting into my inbox so I can get this copy, but I will have it up momentarily.
No one has any objection to adding the building square footage total.
No objection to that.
Eric, I can't see your face. Hey, Eric, did I see you running along Jewsworth Loews this afternoon around 1:15?
I can't run because I'm not in that sort of condition, so I quickly walked. You probably did see me then. I saw you. And I can't see any of your faces either, so I'm going to turn on mute because my child's screaming.
Okay.
All right. Lauren, have you been able to bring the document up?
I can't hear him.
No.
No, you can't hear.
I can't hear him.
I'm going to mute Eric for a minute. No, I apologize. As you've all been aware, I've been on vacation and I've been logged out of my account, so now I'm being told my password's expiring. So I'm working on getting this. Jen, do you have a copy of the document that you could share?
I'm going to go in and get it. I'll be there. Do you want the Word?
You're going to need it in Word.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just, my inbox just, it hasn't been updated since the second. I'm working on that.
Well, we're going to go over.
I'm going into my VPN. I'll be pulling it up. Give me two minutes.
Amy, if you want to deal with the A and R on time, we can stop this at 7:00 and then come back to it.
Well, I'm not, can I actually start the conversation on the A and R now?
No.
That's right.
I think that is, I think that is scheduled.
Well, I don't know.
It's scheduled for 7:15, not sooner. It could be after 7:15.
Right, right. I understand that. I'm just trying to, let's just hold tight.
The A and R doesn't, it's not a public hearing, so it's just on the agenda, but you could take it out of order. Doesn't need a specific time to start.
Is Mr. DeLisi here?
Yes.
Why don't we do that then? And what we want to do, if possible, is if Mr. DeLisi had a new map, it will make it a whole lot easier for us all to see. Oh, we don't want to ask you to do something. You're probably on vacation, right?
No, I'm at a Little League baseball game, so I have full capabilities here.
Okay.
I could, if you'd like, I could just share my screen and explain what's happening. And as far as the comments on the other, yeah, let me just see here.
By the way, I'm recusing myself from this one.
You live in the neighborhood?
No.
Can you guys see my screen? I just want to make sure it's at least doing that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, hold tight because I'm doing this. There we go. Pull this. Okay, let me get back to Zoom and see if I could share my screen. Okay, you guys can see now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Here we go. So I had a conversation after submitting this plan with John Hallen. Wanted to make sure that we were not creating the need for a new common driveway or not creating a new vacant lot. So let me explain what's happening. This is actually a plan that resulted in the conversation with John. And he asked me to show the existing driveways which access the lots. What's happening here is Lot 3 shown on this plan is being sold from Dr. Pompeo to a third party. The buyer, however, wanted the barn that is located on parcel 6D. And in order to give the buyer the barn, there had to be a couple of parcels created and that will need to be kind of swapped off. The first is parcel 6D had to be cut off of Lot 6, which is Dr. Pompeo's existing house, the 144, and that's the barn parcel. Then in between the barn and house at 130 is land that belonged to 146. So we had to create that parcel. Those two, parcel 6D and 4C are to be combined with Lot 1, with Lot 3, which is 130. And then what else needed to be done was because parcel 4C was part of the frontage of 146 Forest, we needed to create, we needed to make sure that we did not impede our ability to, our requirement to have legal frontage. So we created parcel 6C. So all of this was done so as to allow the buyer to get the barn, which was located on a different lot. And that's the best way I can put it. I could show you what it would look like. This is a concept of what, you know, what is going to happen. And it's tough to see, but the barn, it would now be part of the house at 130. So that's it. No, nothing nefarious happening. Just making sure that we have all proper frontage to do what we need to do here.
Just to recap, parcel 6C is the frontage connection for number 146 or Lot 4B.
Parcel 6C is, is the frontage, you see how, of course, I don't have a pointer here, but you see the R in forest, the R in the E and the S. Above that is actually the frontage for that lot. And if you follow it in, what you're going to see is that it would, it would access 146 by utilizing parcel 4C. But because we're going to be giving that now to 130, we had to create parcel 6C so as to maintain that frontage, if that answers your question.
Yeah, it's, so it's, I mean, this is a classic pork chop layout, but it probably is old. But you maintain 50 feet? It looks like it's a little less than 50 feet of width in the neck of parcel 6C?
Uh, 6C.
It's 50 feet of frontage on forest. I can see that there's 50 feet of frontage on forest. But the parcel 6C, the neck of parcel 6C, the, it looks like it's, you know, like 45 feet or something less than 50 in width.
Where do you see that, Clark?
I don't see a number. I don't see the number there, but I mean, if you.
Can you make that a little bit smaller? We're too close in now to see.
If you subtract the 75.5 from the 126.02, that would be looks like just over 50 feet.
Right.
Man, 126 minus 75. 51 feet. Okay, that answers my question. I just had to do some math.
I'm glad that you answered it.
All right, let me ask Tom, oh, Tom, not. Eric Potter, do you have comments?
No comments on my end.
I do have another, I do have another, another comment on the barn. It looks like it's 10 feet from the property line on the, the eastern new property line of parcel 6D.
Yep, that's right.
10 feet. Does that conform to zoning? You're not creating a non-conformity.
I I'm not. My understanding is because it's an accessory structure, it could be closer to the property line.
Well, that's true. That's true. I'm just seeing if it conforms to zoning.
I don't know. And I guess my response to that would be that if, if we find out that it doesn't, I would obviously have to come back to you because that would be illegal. What we're trying to do here is, you know, create an A and R plan that I think it probably has a note that it doesn't conform, you know, that it doesn't. Let's just see here.
Okay, so I just checked the zoning and for residence B, a permitted accessory building can be constructed no closer than six feet to sidelines.
There we go.
As long as it's 15 feet or less in height. So now I would add, how big is the barn?
It's a one, it's a one-story barn.
Okay, so it's not higher than 15 feet to the midpoint of the roof structure?
Not even close, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Great. Jeff, you'll include that, this slight conversation in how you describe this finally to us? Right? Because otherwise, we're just going to have somebody come back and say, well, what about this?
We're not voting on this one. We're just signing an A and R plan, right?
Right, but shouldn't we document this on the plan so that somebody doesn't look just like Clark did?
No, no, the building inspector has the authority to make, you know, if something is brought to his attention, he'll, your role is not, is not, is not to deal with the setback issues. I think Clark was just making sure that, that we're being comprehensive. Your role is to ensure that there's access and frontage.
That's right.
So I think that you're fine. I don't think it's necessary to to, to write anything on the plan. Yeah, I'm happy to if you'd like.
Actually, I would like it because we have a lot of things that have dangling references or no references and changes made in the past. And if it's not a big deal to do it, it will then just be codified on the document and nobody will ever ask the question.
Yeah, but we do have a disclaimer that we put on A and R plans that we're not, we're not confirming, confirming conformance to the zoning.
Compliance to zoning. I think that actually, Amy, I would disagree with that. I think that actually is not the way to go about it because of Clark's language that he just talked about. Because we're not, we're not making statements about compliance with zoning. And if we do it with one, with regards to one aspect, then, you know, where do you draw the line? That's the whole point of kind of, you know, saying that we're not saying that. So we're not saying we comply with zoning. Do your own due diligence. And, and that's up to, you know, a, an owner or a buyer down the line. I think that kind of puts us in a bad position, you know, and where, again, where do you stop? Where do you draw the line?
Well, asking the question whether we're creating a new non-conformity, I think is fair in an A and R discussion, but.
No, that's right, Clark. I agree with that. Definitely 100%.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's frontage and, and access. And the access hasn't changed at all. And the frontage hasn't changed at all. The, just the connection of the frontage has changed a little bit.
All right, so with that said, I am okay with that. I'd like to go through and ask each member to indicate their acceptance of this A and R. Clark Brewer?
Well, is Paul Grady on board with this one? Is he on, on this hearing?
He is on this hearing.
He's going to vote?
He would have to vote.
He doesn't have to vote, no. You only need a three-person vote.
You don't want me to vote, Clark?
Well, you know, we, we don't need a three-person vote, but you're not recused from this, this hearing.
No, he's not. And so I thought what I'd do is go through. Paul Grady, do you have comments in addition to those that have been made about this A and R?
No, I think they've all been raised.
All right, Eric Potter, do you have comments that are in addition to those that have been made about this A and R?
None, none, none.
All right, I have no further comments about the discussion on this A and R. I now want to ask for a vote.
Motion to endorse the A and R.
Thank you. Can we get a second?
Second.
All right, I'll go with the ordered vote. Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye. And Lauren, I'm just going to leave very quickly to see if I can reboot and get video going on this. So, but I do vote aye.
All right, thank you. Amy Glassmire, aye. All right, thank you. Lauren, I mailed you a Word document. Did you get that or did you need it?
I have no way to access my email right now and Jen is locked out of the, okay. She can't even access the meeting right now. She's texting.
Why don't we just make notes on, if you have a paper copy, just make notes on that and then you can edit it when you get back. I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
Emergency.
I mean, I could bring it up.
Well, you're running the meeting, Amy. I don't think you should be editing the document.
We sent the document in a PDF form, but if, more than happy to share my screen to bring it up as well. But I only have it PDF.
Okay, well, I could mail to you, Jeff. I don't know if I have your email.
What, what, what do we do? What decision are you talking about? The A and R?
We are, we are now talking about One Pleasant Street.
We're back on One Pleasant Street.
All right. I have the Word document. I'll, I'll edit it as we go along. You won't be able to see it. I'm not going to get into screen sharing, but I have.
All right.
With all due respect, Jeff isn't editing our decision.
No, no, that's, that's absolutely right. But, but, but Tom, I don't think you have to. I think that we could take notes on our paper copies and have Lauren and Jen do the editing when they get to it. Next week or whenever.
Yeah, we'll have a record via recording and also we have Angela J. So here taking minutes. So between the recording and that, we'll have, I'll have all of your.
Not to worry, Tom. Not to worry.
I can chew gum and write at the same time.
But you don't have to do it.
I know, I don't.
He has offered to do it. So Clark, would you like to, so we are on page two. Clark has offered a numerical adjustment to the description of the site. Do we, can you repeat that number?
Just the square footage of the building in addition to the footprint should be added, which is 23,955 square feet on three levels.
Want to say it again, 23,955?
23,955 square feet. Hey, I saw Eric.
So the 8,043, the original number there is a footprint number.
That's a footprint. That's, and that can stay as a footprint number.
And then the.
Do we have Paul Caleri on this call? I'm sorry to break in, but I thought that that was one of the reasons why we were waiting.
We do not have Paul Caleri on this call.
So if we vote tonight, you'll have to get a unanimous vote.
All right, and Paul Grady is recusing himself, I believe.
So if, if, I mean, I'd say if the applicant is nervous about that, we can continue. Once we get through all the, all the conditions, I think we'll make that decision.
All right, can I, can I continue to lead the discussion here and we can move through this?
Jen's back and she has the document up.
Oh, look at that.
I don't know where I went.
You want to be on page two? In the description of the building. And Clark made a reference to.
No, no, that was too far.
Yeah, you went too far.
Under proposal, under proposal, after 82, 80 square feet, three-story mixed-use building with 23,955 square foot. After structure, I think. 23,000 955 square feet. And the only other thing I wanted to add was between residential and unit, after 14 residential units, residential rental units. Okay, that's good. We're done with that page.
Well, Clark, I mean, this may just be a general question. Do these always have to be rental units?
Yeah.
Yeah, they always do. They could never become like condos.
Nope. Okay. No, because that's a part of the, the deal by the applicant where all the units will count on the subsidized housing inventory because they're doing over 25%. And it's rental.
And later in the document, it also refers to in perpetuity.
Yep. I got no comments on page three.
No, hold, hold on.
What?
Same paragraph on page two, before the word retail, put the word in "commercial", comma.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, now, the next change of any substance is page six. Unless, Clark, did you have something on page three?
I got nothing on page three. I got something on page four.
All right.
Let's go back to page.
Four out of 16?
Yep.
Okay, under procedural history and background, in the third paragraph, the proposal is used to create a mixed-use development. In the middle of that, I wanted to add the square footage again after 8280 square feet.
Okay, so it's after 82, in footprint.
Footprint size.
Then put 23, whatever the number is, 23.
23,955.
955 square foot in total.
All right, I'm going to just. I don't know. All right, maybe sometime.
All right, so right where it says in footprint size, comma, 23,955, is it?
That's right.
Square foot in total, comma. Thank you, Clark, for doing the math.
And then, Tom, do you want to put that "commercial" in that, in this paragraph as well?
No, we don't have to.
Okay. Okay, nothing on. It looks like there's some notes on. I have one note on page five.
Which is what?
Under findings, section A, number two. Number two, at the end of that, 700 to 1500 square feet conforms to zoning. So I wanted feet, comma, conformed, conforming to zoning requirements.
That, that language is a quote from the bylaw, so that's why, that's why it didn't.
I know, I just think it's good to acknowledge.
That's fine, that's fine.
The number.
Let's move on.
So all the other fill-in stuff can be done later. All right, so page, page six. We needed an insert on number five, so Jeff suggested, and I agree, take out the word "insert". Take out the word insert. Put in the board finds.
Give me a second, it's freezing again.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but, okay.
Memory.
Board finds.
Board finds that sufficient provision for screening and buffering is made as specified. Is is made as specified, yeah. In sheet five of 11 of its plans. Parenthesis, the landscaping plan, in parentheses. And I'm good with that one. All right, so next we're at page nine and.
Uh, does anybody else have a something before page nine?
Yeah, yeah, I got page eight. At the bottom, number seven.
Right here?
It, yeah, number seven, uh, ground floor parking. We we don't have any ground floor parking. That's a holdover from some other project.
Um.
On-site parking, on-site parking.
Yeah, just say onsite.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, and the next.
We have the same problem, though, with, uh, the next one, yeah.
With the next sentence on page, uh, nine, top sentence, change ground floor to onsite.
I didn't catch all the differences from the Harbor project. My apologies.
Hey, no worries. That's why we're a team. Um, uh, and on under the Village Business District and Harbor Village um, uh, business guidelines, have they been co-joined? Were they edited and reissued? Because I know we had supplemental for the harbor, but those wouldn't apply to this project because it's in the village. So should we take out and? What is it? What do you got?
The name of the document is this whole title. It was re-edited. It's a version two to include.
Okay, all right, all right, never mind.
That's a good obscure catch.
Also, if it help, it does help me if you just tell me what words are on because I don't have page numbers, so that's why.
All right, so. All right, but keep going down then.
Under F.
F, yeah.
Under F, at the at the end, it says, uh, such access shall be conditioned as emergency only, and I think further on, we talk about that access. I think it should be emergency and, um, by reserved pass.
Well, this is this is the issue we discussed last week at the end of the meeting, and we hadn't made any final decision on it. And it is it is written in bo- it is written in both places for emergency only. And.
Well, there's no way to get to those.
The more and more I think about it, I don't see the need for the Smith Place access as an access, whether it's for six people, seven people, and that, you know, the that's another number that I it's I thought we said six last week and.
We did say six last time.
But there's those.
Seven, but.
Those onsite parking spots, well, if you don't have access to them, they're they drop off the parking total. And I think that's a mistake for a project like this.
You have access to them from the from Pleasant Street. You're just going around the right side of the building and you're going.
And then you'd have to back out of them. We're talking about six parking spaces that are in that one-way aisle from Smith Place. If you take out the access, you and and you only access some.
Versus versus the versus the health, I'm the safety risk to that group home that's on Smith Place.
Yeah, but I with all due respect, I I I live right next to Eight James Place and and I so with all due respect to the Smith Place residents there, I I live right next to Eight James Place and the cars that come out in and there, and I've literally maybe seen one or two cars in the last three or four years coming out of there. So I don't know that it's a significant difference, or, uh, it's gonna really impact that that community, um, if it's for, you know, with that gate up there like that, as we proposed, that would necessitate no access at all.
I mean, what we've got set up prevents the public from using as a cut-through.
That's the dangerous part, in my opinion.
I think that's the safety concern as opposed to, I mean, the only other way to use those six or seven spots is is to to drive in from the from Pleasant Street and then back out. And I I don't think that works.
No, wait a minute. Why back? They're backing out of a space. They're gonna turn their car, the back of their car towards Smith Place and then drive straight out along the other side of the building.
What's the big deal, though, Tom?
I don't get it. There it's a it's a pulling, it's a pulling space.
It's six spaces. What's the big deal in letting the people pull out and go around that other way instead of having to go out the other, it's the Pleasant Street again, whi- which actually has more traffic, Pleasant Street, and now you're gonna have more cars going in and out that way. This actually div- diverts a little bit traffic from what's probably the most, one of the most dangerous places in town off of Beet Street, um, you know?
I I.
You know, this is getting, I wanna I wanna stop this for a minute. We are ha- having a a level of discussion in which we don't have a map, so we really can't see.
Well, I have the drawings pulled up.
Clark, I'm talking. Clark, I'm talking. Please don't interrupt me. We don't have a map up here for us to see. We also have two numbers people are referring to, six and seven. We need to slow it down and and be more systematic in terms of what we're saying, because we are changing the document. We're also potentially changing what we said last week, uh, the last time we met met. So we have to be consistent. Otherwise, one person at a time, making a claim about what we are changing here. And, uh, Eric seems to have had the floor, but Eric, I I I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying. Uh, and so it it it's you start first, but recognize that the modification, it's hard to tell whether you're making a major modification, a minor modification, or a comment. So first declare, first declare what you're doing.
Okay, I apologize. I'm making no modification whatsoever. I'm just saying that, uh, the proposal of coming off of Pleasant Street for the six parking spaces, parking, going through the gate, parking in the back, and then leaving through Smith Place is fine by me. Uh, I don't see the necessity of restricting all access to Smith Place due to my experience with living close to James Place and 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 knowing that I'd like to divert more traffic away from Pleasant Street because of all the walkers down there. So I'm fine with coming in off of Pleasant, going out of Smith with the six parking spaces that are there.
Uh, that's changing the original plan.
Who's the original plan?
Oh, I think so. I mean, the 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 engineering site plan has seven, I just counted them, seven parking spots on this little one-way thing that comes off of Smith Place. At a diagonal, they're diagonal parking spots.
Well, uh, in the hearing last time, we were speaking about six spaces.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. All right, the updated plan dated May 11th has six parking spaces and a gate.
All right, so it 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 comes down to is the planning board gonna condition this as emergency vehicles only or emergency vehicles plus six dedicated parking spaces?
Right.
Like, last week, we referred to them as reserved parking spaces for specific individuals. That's what we said in the hearing.
Yeah.
No, we discussed it. We didn't, we didn't vote on it. All right.
But the but the applicant said they're gonna be reserved for specific residential.
Right, so that is that is what we concluded.
With me.
Fine, then then I what I would gather here is that by three to one, we are proving proving the language of of having the six parking space holders be able to have access. Fine.
That is correct.
Well, fine, it's a three-to-one vote. I I just.
We're not voting. We're not voting.
I know that, but. There there's there's gonna come down to here because what Jeff scribbled on today is I think of substance that we.
Tom, you're gonna have to repeat yourself.
As we did Harbor, we had different points of the we had different points of agreement and disagreement with that one, too, so.
But we're not voting.
All right.
On each point, although we could.
No, we're we're not. I just wanted on the record that I oppose it, but it's three to one. I can tell, I can read the writing on the wall here, so let's move on, and when when we get down to the other condition that refers to this, we'll make the necessary changes. That's.
All right.
The next section with the general conditions, this is where there was a lot of reference to the Harbor project. My apologies again. I emailed the other day.
Don't worry, Tom, it's fine. Nobody's upset about it.
No, all right, but I I as opposed to Jeff's scribbles on it, I made edits the other day. Um, I think everybody saw them. They're not, Jeff, I can tell you they're not changing anything of substance. And, uh, I just suggest we adopt the changes that I wrote to it the other day.
Page 10 looks fine to me.
All right. So that means that when we get to the special conditions, we're starting at number 13. So Jen, Jen and Lauren will have to make those edits to the general conditions section, one through 12.
Are we getting a lightning storm?
We're going to.
We're going to get a really bad one in a minute.
All right, so can we start? So.
Keep going.
All right, let's let's go. So the next, so now on the, uh, on the special condition site development, it's gonna start at number 13, be its first number. Um, and then 14, 15.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, so in terms of 14, 15, 13, 14, 15. And then 16 about the electric vehicle. Now, was there anything that DP?
You broke up, Tom. You're gonna have to repeat that.
I can I can speak to DPW if you'd like.
All right, so the electric vehicle one should say number 16. How's the computer?
We're starting to lose communication here.
Yeah, Tom's breaking up, but you sound fine, Amy.
Yeah, I I understand that. I I also feel like, um, uh, the ability to go through these items have become had has become more complex.
Well, we're almost through. We got 12 out of 16.
If if you just let this go through, we'll get done. It's not that much here.
But oh, let's keep going.
Okay, under building design and materials, the only add I had was uh, I guess it would be number 17 for your reordering, Tom. Um.
I'm sorry, the screen sharing is just, okay, so this, is there anything from DPW that we need to add under this section of the decision? Yes or no?
No.
All right, so let's delete that condition.
I just, if I could just say, Tom, that I did, I don't know if you heard me, I I went out again, um, I did speak to the DPW director, and he did review the final site plan of May 11th, and they had they were happy with all of their conditions being added to that site plan.
Fine, okay, all right. So now under building design and materials, the next, the first condition there is number 17 and 18, and as we did with the Harbor, Clark, I didn't know if you had any specific design things or elements you wanted to add.
Two, two added things. Under, uh, the first one, the building shall comply with the design and materials shown on, instead of the plans, the drawings.
All right, so it should be design and materials, first of all.
Shown on the drawings, not plans, because a plan is just like a, um, a horizontal representation. It's also the, um, the elevations and 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 other details.
All right. Shown on the on the drawings?
Yes, please.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Was there any other architectural stuff to add?
Yeah, the only other add-on would be, um, all light fixtures should be dark sky compliant.
Okay.
You want that at 19?
Yep.
That would be exterior light fixtures. All exterior light fixtures.
Don't you feel under pressure to spell correctly?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um.
No other comments that page.
All right, the next is number 20, and if you want to throw, I guess Jeff has added that the number is 30 and save Lauren a an add-in.
And change that from seven to six?
Yes.
That's right.
And how much 30 here?
Yeah, I assume it's 30 and not 29 now.
All right.
All right, so then.
So 21.
So if you want to edit, you know, in in what's going to be condition number 21 and 22, and if you want to use Jeff's description rather than right side, track side, that's fine by me. Um, in 23, it should be will be a one-way, comma, gated access.
One-way gated access. It will be one-way gated access. Right. Oh. Left. And limited to public safety vehicles and the six reserved spots.
You also want to add to make this consistent, commercial and retail.
Yeah, limited to access only of public safety vehicles of the town and the.
Six deeded residential parking spaces.
We use reserved as a term before, reserve, not deeded.
All right.
Because these are rentals.
And.
All right, so where.
And the and the six reserved spaces at the rear of the property. All right. Now, in in the next one, in number 24, uh, Jeff is suggesting the addition of the language unless with approval of the planning board at the end, which in other words, leaves the door open. I drafted this as um, being absolute, not subject to further change or discussion. Um, the concern of 24 is that any other project over in that area, there was a past one proposed, if there's a future one proposed, that there be no um, granting of any rights for another property owner to use this property as a pass-through for access. So I think that should be absolute. Jeff is suggesting a qualification that it could be revisited by the planning board in the future. Um, that's for the four of us to decide right now which.
I I would, uh, go along with what you're saying, Tom.
Yeah.
I I would also say that before we leave 23, to be consistent, we want to say commercial and retail. And we also want to put the full building square footage.
Since we. What are you talking about? Where?
Where it says, "Commercial units of project shall consist of."
We're we're not at that one yet. We're at the one before.
Oh, oh, okay.
The only problem I have with absolute language is that it it it's a little bit, um, it 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 does, it does, you know, and the intent is to give, put, you know, heavy restrictions on things, but I don't know that, maybe it's just a personal belief and. I don't know that, maybe it's just a personal belief and what, you know, the five of us here are placing this absolute restriction on the property. I, it, it, it is leaving a window open for, you know, down the road, if, you know, who knows what the dynamic is, it does allow for there to be a discussion about it and five presumably qualified people that are on a planning board make the decision at that time, where something absolute, you know, is, you know, you're taking a little bit of power into your hands, right? I mean, who are
I consider this, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, but I, I, I mean, I'm not.
I consider this one a no-brainer, because why on earth would a planning board now or in the future ever permit one property to be used as a pass-through for another property?
Well, you, you weren't a part of it, Tom, but the the, the, there was a Smith Place development proposal that was pulled a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And in fact, they proposed access through this property in a similar configuration to what you see now. But I, I think you could leave this in place and, and frankly, because we don't know what that is and whether, whether it would make sense and what the, what the loading would be, what the traffic count changes would be, I say leave it in. And it could be modified later. I mean, the applicant can come back, you know, six years from now and say, hey, can we access this other property through our thing? And we'd be like, okay, we needed a new traffic study and we need this and we need that and we'll consider it then.
Alright.
Well, I guess what I, I guess I'm not sure I feel the same way. I, I feel as if
That's okay.
We, the, the design of this project has been very tightly configured and that there was a lot of thought in, in what was actually going to happen in that area. And there was concerns about the underground condition of circumstances and we also made it seem that there was some level of finality with how that, that parking area was going to be used, that as a, as a passageway. So I, I'm not sure why we are backing off of that now.
Well, we're not. And what I just said, I, I'm saying, leave the language as it is.
As is.
The applicant can come back in six years or never to ask for a modification to this.
Alright, it's not, that's fine, as long as it's, okay, I agree with that.
Alright, it's, it's set there and then, you know, if that other property gets developed, well, they, who knows what that is? Maybe it's a single house, who knows? Right? And they don't need the access. So, so we'll just cross that bridge when we get to it, if ever. And you can leave the language as is, and I think that that would, I think that's a, I think that is an important thing for the neighborhood group.
Yeah, I agree.
Exactly.
That was really important to them.
It was.
Like it's, it's an okay thing to put into this decision.
Alright, let's accept that and move on.
I got nothing else on this page.
Well, again, again.
There's a lot of notes. I'm okay with those.
Yeah, I, I, again, Jeff is suggesting a change as otherwise permitted by the planning board, but I think we understand.
You repeat that, Tom? I got, I understand.
26, well, 25 could be, could be the subject of a modification in the future, so, alright. So the residential use section.
Are we gonna make the commercial unit number 20, 23, consistent with what we've said above?
No, I don't think we have to. Unless somebody has split up how much the first floor is from the second and third floor. I don't, I don't think we need to.
I, I'm only asking for language consistency. If, that we don't need to do it, that's alright.
We don't need to do it.
So we're now on page 13. Starting with residential units.
Yep.
Yeah, the language that's in, in there, I have no problem with this whole page.
Alright, page 13 now.
Well, check with others.
The, the last one there, "In the event the applicant is approached by an owner of a separate project." Just made a comment about that. I mean, that was, that was an anticipation that perhaps another project was going to approach the owner of this project to meet the other projects requirement for inclusionary zoning. I, that's not coming to pass, so that condition 29 can be deleted.
Everybody good with that? Am I taking it? Okay.
Alright, what number are we on now?
Under public and open space, it's 29. 30, under 30, Jeff is suggesting that we, the measurement of the public sidewalk along Pleasant Street would be the 138-foot public sidewalk along Pleasant Street. That's the number he says it is. I don't have a problem with that addition.
Alright. Does anybody else have a problem with that?
I think that's, I think that's good. I mean, what, what does make arrangements with the town as necessary mean? I mean.
Well, I mean, they don't own the public sidewalks.
To, to pay for the construction of the improvement or have the town do it and reimburse the town, it's, to make arrangements, it doesn't really mean anything to me.
So.
I think it means what we think.
Clark, do you want to make a recommendation?
I don't, I don't have a recommendation of specific language for this.
It's to recognize.
Okay, wait, Tom. Eric?
Yeah, I was just wondering, again, going back to the project across the street with that commercial building that's just sitting there, I wonder if there's with regards to this particular paragraph, would it be, you know, okay to put within a certain, you know, whether, whether it's, you know, two years of completion of the project or something like that, so that you know, or within, you know, signing off of a, the, the, all building permits, that this has been resolved, so that you kind of have a finished project there and it's not just lingering out this, this issue. But again, I don't, I don't really know how that public-private thing works. But that would be my recommendation, that there's some sort of a timeframe for which this happens.
Eric, would you like to make a recommend, would you like to make a language recommendation, please?
I'd like to ask to see what Clark and Tom, in their, what they would think i- if, if that's a reasonable recommendation.
Yeah, well, I just think that such, to make such recommend, make such arrangements is it doesn't really mean the right thing to me. I think, I think changing it to make improvements or to obtain approval from the town in the public space, because that would be selection approval and DPW approval to make improvements on public property for the 138-foot. And that's a, that's a great one. That's, that's, that's definitely a, a location that needs, needs improvement. So that, I, I really think it's great the applicant is on board with that a neighborhood amenity.
Okay, wait, don't say anymore. Let Jen just get this straight, okay? I can watch her.
No more talking, no more talking, blah, 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 blah.
So are we, are we saying shall, or do you want?
Shall?
Shall work with the town to make improvements.
To the 138-foot plus or minus public side. So take out, yeah. There you go.
And I agree with Eric, we should set a time limit, that it must be completed within 12 months of the completion of the project?
No, prior to, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Okay, that's fine.
Getting quite dark over here.
Yeah, if I get hit by lightning, I'm turning off my computer.
This is, this is not like new information, everything, but if Jeff is listening, you know, speaking of timelines, it's very important that this, the affordable units get on the town's count as soon as possible because of the coming census, even though it's delayed a year.
Local action, local action units or, or are these LIP units?
These are local action units.
So those don't, those don't count until there's a CFO for the unit.
Alright, but my, my, my concern for the timeline is, I, you know, I was somewhat surprised since this building is being demolished that a restaurant tenant has been brought in at this point in time. And I'm just wondering, is this slowing up the timeline and, you know, when will we see these affordable units getting built? I guess.
Well, they gotta build the whole building, Tom, I mean.
I know that, but then why bring in a tenant? Why bring in a restaurant?
It's the same thing.
Well, alright, I.
Why not?
Okay, wait, the, the, I, this is a little bit superfluous and we can't answer it.
It is superfluous, so let's forget it. I'm just
Okay, so, but, but.
Took me aback when I read that a new restaurant was coming.
They gotta build a building first.
Okay. Are we moving on to number 30? Is there, are there any comments on number 30?
No, no, we're good.
Nothing else on this page.
Right.
Alright, so on what's going to be condition 34, the last sentence says, "Notification shall be provided." Jeff wants to add the words "reasonable advance written notification." I, you know, I don't know that that's necessary because.
That's certainly not what we said at the Harbor project.
No, because I, I.
We said that we would have access at all time.
Right.
Anytime.
I believe the building inspector can make a snap decision on site without having to have it in, in writing in advance.
Right.
So I'd rather just leave it the way it's written.
Okay.
Alright, let's move on. Thank, next.
Just number those and then the next issue is a carryover from the Harbor project is a performance bond, which the applicant is questioning.
Which number is that? Oh, down here.
Well, the reason we requested a performance bond at the Harbor was so that if for some reason the project was stopped, that it, the site would have sufficient resources to close it up, so it was not a hazard. I don't think that's a bad idea.
Yeah, I, I, and I would say to the applicant and to Jeff that you know, you're granted the scale of the Harbor project is larger, but there's still the concern, and I think this is limited, as Amy just said, to just making sure that the property is safe if it's abandoned during construction at any time. I don't think it needs to be bonded to the thing, to the point that the town, that's 42.
Sorry.
I don't think it has to be bonded to the point of the town is gonna come in and finish construction.
Right, but, but it should be, I mean, particularly because we are right next to a residential area.
Here, we're just talking really, Jeff, about saving this, you know, protecting the site from being a public hazard.
And making it safe, right?
I think it's.
That, that is correct.
That's not completion.
The amount of the bond would be limited accordingly, so.
Well, you know, we, we probably want to get an estimate for the bond, right? We would want to get an estimate.
That's right.
Maybe from our peer, if we, from our peer reviewer engineering team and add that.
The next thing, under other permits. So under other permits, number 44, Jeff is suggesting that we, the site plan approval has a one-year lifespan and the special permit has two-year lifespan. And Jeff is suggesting we put those in harmony and make them both two years. With some added language, so.
I, I think you have the power to do it. It, it's not a, it's not a big deal. We would just have to come back for an extension.
Cindy, if Cindy's out there, does she know if we have that power?
I'm sorry, could you repeat, please? I've got the electrical storm overhead. So can you repeat?
Alright, so the, the issue is that the site plan has a one-year lifespan and the special permit has a two-year lifespan. Jeff is suggesting we add language to extend the site plan that we're granting to two years, so that they're in harmony with each other on timeframes.
I think that's okay, personally.
What's the
What do you think, Cindy?
What's the reason for having them different in the firm?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
I think that's, I think that's, it's either, I think it's in the bylaw that way. I think site plan review is only good for a year.
Then I don't think you should extend it, but that doesn't mean he can't come back and seek an extension.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If the bylaw says one year, then I, I would leave it at that, but he can come back and seek an extension.
Yeah, I think that's better. I think that's more in alignment with why it's the way it is.
I, I'm fine. I
Yeah.
Just kind of pointing it out.
Jeff, so you know, Jeff, so you know, what it says in the bylaw is that if you seek that extension, you have to make, you've had to have made substantial effort to build the building, so presumably, construction will be underway.
There's language in, under H of site plan review in the bylaw that says you can extend it and it's one year. So why don't we just be in harmony with the bylaw?
Alright, that's fine.
Alright, so we're leaving it as the bylaw.
Alright, settle down, you got it.
I might add, I might add, it looks like Paul's here as well. He might need to be promoted into the conversation to have controls. I just noticed that.
If you're referencing Paul Kaleri, yes, I wanted to announce that Paul Kaleri has joined us and he's on the panelist now.
Alright, hello, Paul. Do we have other requirements on this page?
I don't think we have any other requirements at all.
Alright. So.
I don't have anything else in the whole document.
Okay, so we do still have a, a bit of an open discussion. So let me ask first off, when did Paul come into the discussion?
I've been here for about the last 15 minutes of it.
Okay, so. The only place where we had some disagreement is with regard to the access to the parking area, is that correct?
No, we're, we're all set. There's three of you that want it. Paul's vote won't matter either way, so we're all set.
Alright. So would anybody like to make final comments?
But just so Paul knows what it was, originally in the draft decision, we had limited access to emergency vehicles only from Smith Place. There was a discussion and there's six parking spots along that accessway, that we changed the language to have reserved parking for those six spots. Because the parking count for the whole project is only 30.
Right, I remember they had significant amount, yeah. Sounds good.
And Tom, would you like?
It's getting windy.
Tom, would you like?
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant site, site plan review, positive site plan review and grant the special permit in accordance with the decision that we have just gone over. Further, that that decision be appropriately edited by staff with fill-in information and made available for signatures as soon as possible. I don't know what our timeframe is about how much longer we have to sign all this, probably within the week, but so the mo, the motion is to approve it as in accordance with this decision.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, alphabetical order, Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Paul Kaleri.
Paul Kaleri, aye.
Eric Potter.
Eric was outside, wasn't he?
Eric Potter.
Why don't you vote?
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Okay.
Eric Potter, aye.
Alright, we
That's unanimously.
Have unanimous decision.
Thank you. I know
Sorry about that.
It was tough and I, we all very much appreciate the consideration of the board. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. In light of the weather.
Motion to adjourn.
May I get a second?
Second.
Alphabetical order, Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Paul Kaleri.
Paul Kaleri, aye.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Be safe, close your windows.
Thanks, everyone. Talk to you tomorrow.
Bye. Bye.